I'd like to begin, just thank you everybody for waiting and indulging us. Sorry, we had the closed session a little longer. We have a lot of things to cover, so we're a few minutes late. Go ahead and get started now. So if you'll join me in the pledge of allegiance, please.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution of the United States, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. So I need a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
So move.
And a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And the opposed say no. That motion carries. I need a motion to approve the Board of Education meeting minutes for August 6th.
So move.
Got a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any discussion about the minutes? Alright, now I think that one or two of us were not here, so we'll begin with approval and then abstentions. So all those in favor of approving the minutes say aye.
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 Anyone opposed to the motion? Alright, anyone who wishes to abstain? I will abstain, I was not here that night. Okay? The next item is patron comments. Do we have any patron cards? We do not, so we will move on. The next item is superintendent and board comments, and I will turn that over to Dr. Knos.
Good evening. Quiet group. Welcome back to the school year. I'm thrilled to be here. We're gonna see some, we've got some things to show you in just a little bit when we get the agenda rolling. But for right now, just a few good news items. The Newsweek High School Rankings are out. You probably saw that information, there's good coverage on it. Two, Rockwood High Schools made the list. Out of the three Missouri high schools on the list of 500, Lafayette High School ranked first in the state and Marquette High School ranked third in the state. So, you know, I'm always careful with these rankings and these classifications that say we're better than them and so on and so forth. I sometimes think that that gets in the way of the spirit of educating all kids and being champions for all kids. But worth mentioning, and definitely we know that Lafayette is, Marquette, all of our high schools are quality high schools, and so it's nice to see something like Newsweek and National Magazine saying. So congratulations to Lafayette and Marquette. Baldwin Elementary student Stevie Dorr was recently featured by West News Magazine for building a Little Library in her front yard. If you aren't familiar, Little Libraries offer free books and they're housed in small distribution boxes for the community. So that was wonderful for Stevie to have the interest in doing that in her front yard. Or he. I don't know if Stevie is-
It's a little girl.
Is a little girl. Okay. So I had it right. Three Rockwood students in 2015, six, fifteen students and teachers as research scientists, that's the STARS cohort, have been awarded an LMI Aerospace Award for Excellence in Research. This is the highest honor in the STARS program, so congratulations to Romeo Chinglav- Chinggalvala. A practice threat, didn't do so well. Also Shuhan and Kyle Westendorf for receiving that LMI Aerospace Award for Excellence in Research. Wild Horse Elementary School was recently featured on the show Are You Smarter Than a Fifth Grader? They came out big winners. The school won $10,000. The producers of the show invited Wild Horse after they read about music teacher Matt Edmondson and has challenged his students to raise money for cancer research. I don't know if you saw the episode, it was very, very cute, and they were excited. And that actually happened a while back, but they had to sit on it because of their agreements with release for the Are You Smarter Than a Fifth Grader program. Finally, the Rockwood School District has received a Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting from the Government Finance Officers Association. According to the GFOA, which is what I just read, the certificate of achievement is the highest form of recognition in governmental accounting and financial reporting. So congratulations to our finest department with the great leadership of Tim and Dan Stein. And I'll, a few more things to say about the opening of the school, but I'll save that for the first agenda item.
Any other board members have any comments they'd like to make?
I just wanna say that all the videos and tweets that went out the first day of school, I think, were phenomenal. I think that it's so important to have just those images out there for the parents to see because it's been proven, you know, fact that if you have that parent involvement and the soul included in that entire process, that it will assist in, you know, success in their child's education and building that bridge. I think this was a great way to start the year off and build that bridge, so. Efforts like that need to be acknowledged. Because all schools did it.
You know, this is different. I've been looking at the buses. Those are really nice-looking buses. They've done a great job, the bus company, of upgrading the buses from a couple of years ago. I remember what they looked like a couple of years ago. They were really nice buses, so I'm proud of them, proud of Eric, proud of everybody that worked on those. That's a little bit different.
Any other comments? I would just add briefly that it's a, as many of us do on the first day of school, I made it to, I think, nine different schools, you can only do so many in a day, but I understand Dr. Knos made them all, but that's-
Two days.
He's a superhuman guy, so. But it's a very satisfying thing to do. There's a lot of times when we hear different things about the schools and we're always dealing with things that go wrong. This was a day when everything went right. It's very exciting to see the differences between the middle school kids that are coming in and they're kind of wondering where they're going into. The high school kids are coming in dragging themselves barely to get through the door. And then you go to the grade schools and they're all excited, so. But it was a good thing. If board members haven't had a chance to do that in the next year, try not to miss it. It's worth doing, so. Any other comments by board members? Then we'll go on to the consent agenda items. Need a motion to approve the consent agenda items as submitted.
So move.
Got a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any discussion on those items?
Can we go over the chart of the contributions again, please?
Sure. Can we get down to that one? 7.09? Oh, I guess I'll wait.
Yes. Yes. Babler made, Babler's a parent-teacher's organization. I forgot how much they contributed, but it's a nice amount.
Seventy-five hundred?
Oh yeah, $7,500. This is like the eighth or ninth board meeting in a row where the parent-teachers organizations are contributing. We don't, sometimes, I think we tend to forget about the PTO organizations as board members and people out in the community. I know the schools and the administrators and the teachers love them. They really do a nice job, and this is just another example of providing things that are very worthwhile for the, for the schools. And so I hope we do send them some thanks and stuff like that. Do we do that? We send thank you notes, or?
When the trip, the donations are made, yes.
Whew, good. I thought you did, Kim. I just wanted to check to make sure. Get the next one, is Ellison? That one is $16,752.40 that the parent-teachers organization contributed to them, and that's for additional books for the classroom libraries. Another great donation.
They made a significant impact to their library. Allison was just blown away by that.
And then the next one also, that is an unusual one. They got a grant. And that was, is that by the parent-teachers organization? Is that by the middle school that did that? Well, the school applied. They got a grant for $2,510 from Fuel Up to Play 60 Grant. I don't know what they're gonna do with the money.
It's a PD grant. It's a PD and tax. They're going to-
Oh, PD and tax.
They're going to import on healthy snacks and healthy food. They're going to put it more on smoothies and getting more fruits and vegetables and stuff.
That's not quite a, that's not quite a contribution, but it's a grant. It's nice to mention. Thank you.
Okay. Any other board comments, or comments on the consent agenda item? Alright, I think we have a motion and a second to approve them, so all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say no? Great, that is approved. Let's go on to the agenda items, and the first one is the Beginning of School Update by Dr. Knos.
And we're really gonna let some pictures speak to you, as I think what Dominic said was so accurate and so important, and I, I hear from parents all the time that they really feel that our efforts with social media and just making those kinds of things, it's like a window into the day of our children. Now, I think the same thing. My daughter's in college now. I wish there was a camera up there keeping an eye on her for me. But I can't say enough about the start of the school year, and of course you expect me to say that being the superintendent, but I really speak from my heart. I did spend two days getting around the entire district, and, you know, the conversation I have with our educators a lot is that we've really learned, in public education in general, we've really learned a lot about how to open up a school year that I think has, that has helped immensely with our children. We have so many, our orientations with kids that are especially making the transitions, and our opportunities for kids to be in buildings over the summer, whether it's a band program or an athletic program. There just is not near the level of angst with the start of school. As some of us remember, well, when we were all children, but even early in my career, it just, the feel of school, and I think we get better at that every single year. And I thought it was good. Last year, of course, I was riding on the, you know, the high of being back in the district and really enjoying that, but it just was an extremely smooth start. My barometers also stretched to, you know, program satisfaction, how often is my phone ringing? And just very, very little coming in with anybody negative about the start of the school year, whether it be buses or children's schedule. That doesn't mean that there weren't issues, but nothing rising to a monumental issue. And I think that just proving that it was just a very good year. Our focus, we came out of our summer meetings focusing on individual children, trying to help all kids thrive, and we're pulling that together nicely. You're seeing evidence of that in all of the schools. You're gonna hear more about something we're calling Spark, as that kind of takes off over the next months and even years, that we identify the passions that make kids want to thrive in life, the individual passions. So it's been a great start, and I think you do evidence that on the social media piece. But we've got a couple of things. We've got a slideshow followed by a little bit of a video. So we'll start with the slideshow and let that speak for itself. And we also have a small video. Short video.
Today is your birthday, August 19th, 2015. Happy birthday at school. Your teacher and all staff members are so proud and happy with us. We hope today is another memorable moment, and that you'll be here today knowing that this is your school and you belong.
Happy birthday, everyone. Happy birthday, everybody.
Happy birthday at school.
Happy birthday at school.
Happy birthday at school, Rockwood.
Happy birthday at school.
Happy birthday at school, everybody.
Today is your birthday at school, and do you see us before your mommy? I'm on my birthday at school.
Wrapping up a wonderful birthday back to the 2015-16 school year in the Rockwood School District. It's been a great day, seeing a lot of our kids back in the buildings, our parents, even firemen and policemen came out to love and remember going back. It's been a great, great day. We're all here. We're glad you're back and can't wait to see you again. All good? Good day? Good day? Alright, I can see you guys back.
I did, before we move on, I did want to mention that I made that comment at the end about our local police officers and fire departments. It was really, really special to see them out in force, and, you know, we're always, we're used to working in partnership with our police and fire, but just to see them out in force and see, you know, firemen pulling up and just standing there greeting kids and, you know, being a presence, it really, it really created that partnership. A lot of parents that I saw commented on that. Of course, first thing they say is something wrong, but they notice quickly that they're smiling and they're engaging with kids just like we are, so. That's very, very, my thanks goes out to them because that just made it that much more special in the morning. Great day. It was a great day. Great start.
Thank you. Any other comments on that one?
I'll thank you for putting those nice-looking buses in that last video.
After you just said that. Alright, the next item is, I think Dr. Brown's gonna join us for a information presentation on Parents as Teachers Program, and it's 30 years, 30 years.
Yeah, 30 years. So thank you very much, President Dole and Directors and Dr. Knos for allowing us to be here tonight. There's no action items that we're asking. We're asking just for celebration with you of our 30 years of Parents as Teachers. And beside me is somebody who has been at the helm of Parents as Teachers since it started, 30 years. Now she says it's not quite 30 years, but we're going on 30 years. She was here when it started, and Diane Kenny, maybe you've known her, but she's the supervisor of Parents as Teachers, and she oversees the parent educators. And next to her is Cindy Lewis, and Cindy has been with us for nine years, and she oversees the screening, of which we do a lot of screenings from birth through age five. And I have to mention in our audience, we have one of our parent educators, Joan King. Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Yay. And when you were telling about Stevie at Baldwin setting up the book, she's like, "I was her parent educator." So, and then she also has another one at the house. So I think there's probably a few people in the room who have been in Parents as Teachers, so without further ado, let's get started with our things that we want to share with you tonight. So first of all, it's important, wrong way, for you to know that Parents as Teachers is an evidence-based model, so it's based on evidence and empirical research that students do benefit from this early intervention program that actually supports the families, who are then there to support their children. Because we know that parents are students' first teachers. They do spend a lot of time in school with us through the years, but they spend more time with their parents. So if we equip them and we partner together, the outcomes are greater. There are actually four components to the Parents as Teachers Program. The first is the personal visit, and we consider that the heart of the home visit. So while the parent educator and the parents are actually interacting with the children on home visit, the parent educator is also facilitating some discussion. Next, we have the group connections, and the group connections are where families come together to meet and to discuss and learn about different topics. Could be such things as sleep, or discipline, or toilet learning.
We offer three types of screening: health, hearing, and vision, three for developmental and kindergarten screening. And before we move to the next point, I want to share an email receipt from one of our parents. Screening team, you screened my four-year-old son Ty, an elegant child. He failed the vision screening. We did a suggested and took him to the eye doctor. Guess what? His vision was horrible and he needed glasses. The glasses have opened a whole world for him, and he actually told me with his glasses on, "Mommy, I can see." So this is just a little enduring period. This picture made over here with Pedro.
She is because she is.
It was, it was quite a moment. But it also serves as a reminder about the importance of annual screening. For full service, we do the developmental component and the health components, and it's so important to do that annually. When we look at point four, we offer an extensive resource network to our parents to link them to community resources that's fit their specific needs.
So next you can see that there are four primary goals, and we're going to talk about those goals in the next few slides. So the first goal has to do with increasing parent knowledge and improving parenting practices. So while the parent educator is visiting, then the parent might bring up certain topics with her or challenges with the parent educator, and they have a discussion. And during that time, then the parent, the parent is gaining confidence, knowledge, and skills.
And in addition, when parents create that rich language environment, children gain a larger vocabulary. And then in turn, children with a larger vocabulary typically do better on standardized tests and better at school.
And this was already mentioned by a board member tonight, that when we get parents involved, we have better outcomes. So when we get parents involved in Parents as Teachers, here's some of the outcomes that result from that. So the second goal is focused on early identification and intervention because it actually saves money. The annual, the annual special education cost per student is approximately $8,080, while the cost of a non-special education student is a little over half of that.
And as you can see, there are many skills that are positively impacted by school readiness. Research has shown that children score higher on tests, and we know they are better prepared for kindergarten. Now, we like to think of it as that connection between PAT book activities and ACT success.
Another outcome is the prevention of child abuse and neglect. Because we go into homes and we equip parents with tools to be successful parents, even in difficult situations with their children, we reduce the number of situations that could result in abusive neglect. So the question, why invest in early childhood? Well, for every dollar that's invested in early childhood, there's a return of anywhere between $3 and $17 or $18. And I just want to make a note that Parents as Teachers had a higher benefit per dollar of cost ratio when the research was done than many of the other home visiting programs that they researched. And on the next slide, it talks about 90% of the brain development happens before age five. So although you can't quantify the impact of a home visit, of course, we keep meticulous data because we know that the continuity of visits is directly related to the outcome. So let me talk just about the important points on this page right here. Parent educators last year made close to 5,000 home visits. We visited a little over 1,200 families, and those visited, those families that were visited included about 1,668 children. We screened almost 2,500 children between the ages of three months to kindergarten. Trying to do more than one thing at one time. We're excited that Rockwood is a national affiliate, and that's a really big deal. It's really more than a national affiliate, even though it's called the National Parents as Teachers Center, because they actually are involved in other countries such as China, Canada, and Europe. So that is a big deal. To be an affiliate, there are requirements, and Diane's gonna tell us just about a couple of those. In order for Rockwood to succeed at the goals that we've been talking about, we're working on some of the following action plans for this year. One is to increase the number of visits to families. Two, offer visits 12 months out of the year. And three is to reach out to new families. So the message that I want you to take away is that we already work hard to allocate our funds to best meet the needs of families, and now we are striving and continuing to strive to improve our program. We do have a video, if you have a couple of minutes to watch. It is another way to illustrate the importance of early intervention.
That's me at four months old. I'm one of the thousands of beautiful miracles born into party every day. That's my mom. She's 17 and never finished high school. She's got some big dreams for me, but she's alone and she's scared. This is my first birthday. That's my girl, my cousin Tanya, and my boyfriend Kevin. We all live together. It's cloudy and crowded. I hope we'll move soon. I don't like Kevin. He's always yelling.
This is my second birthday. We're all at daycare, strapped and watching TV again. I wish I could just run around.
This is my third birthday. My brother Will has taken care of me while my mom sleeps. She works the night shift, so we can't turn off the TV. But we get to go to bed in the early morning.
This is my fourth birthday. We're sleeping at my aunt's this month. I don't know who my daddy's coming home, but I'm hungry and I'm exhausted.
This is my fifth birthday. This is my first day of kindergarten. I'm tired, I'm hungry, I'm unprepared. Because I didn't get a rainstorm, I'm twice as likely to be in special education. 30% more likely to never go to college. 70% more likely to be listed for a line of work. Become too married, drop out of school, never find a job, spend the rest of your life in poverty.
My mom plays with me all the time. She smiles a lot at me, and she knows she's not alone anymore.
Grandma Tanya and Kevin give me a story every night before I go to bed.
I go to my school every day, where I get to run and play and see all my new friends.
Grandma and I go to preschool together. Today, we learn about dinosaurs and play the counting game.
Every morning, my daddy and I brush our teeth and eat breakfast together. We have our own place now. Mama and we'll always be together.
This is my first day of kindergarten. I'm rested, I'm eager, I'm confident, I'm curious, I'm prepared, I'm ready. I have a new future. Each first five years, I change everything. Anyone interested in investing?
I want to thank Rockwood Board of Education for investing because we are financed part by the state and part by the ongoing support from the school district, and we appreciate that. Any questions?
How do you select-
How do you select, how do you decide on a visit? How do you know who to visit? How do you know to set that up?
How do we decide who to visit?
Does somebody request it? Do you?
Yes, generally, the parents will call in, or write in, or email in, or something like that. And we, in Rockwood, have really tried hard to visit any family, offer visits to any family who asks. We do mostly focus on the birth to three. If we visit families who have children from three to five, then generally, they have some high needs, and I think you have a high needs characteristic sheet that we gave you ahead of time. But from birth to three, we try to visit every family that asks.
That asks for.
We also give out information, our hospitals and pediatricians, so they get information when they go to those visits.
We do get referrals from agencies and pediatricians. Foster parents are asked to call us, and oftentimes whoever is in charge of that, the caseworker, calls us to do it as well.
Does every district in the state participate in Parents as Teachers programs?
It's mandated by law for every district to participate.
A lot of it depends on what the district puts into, now I shouldn't say how successful, but how much they can do, right?
That's correct, yes.
Rockwood is very, very good at helping that, right?
Yes, yes. There was a time several years ago, in 2011, that there was a cut, a serious cut, and some of the districts felt that they couldn't do it. And because of the support of the board and Rockwood, we were able to continue. We had to truly slow down our program, and we didn't get to do as many visits, but we did get to continue.
I actually, fortunately, unfortunately, I was during that slowdown process, but fortunately for my kids, we were able to take part in the program, and I know how valuable it is because I know there's so many times where parents, you know, you have your child, and they assume, boom, you know how to raise a child, and you don't. Fortunately, you know, we're out here without families, so fortunately, I did have assistance of the Parents as Teachers program because they do give you so much guidance, and just as far as developmentally, how to capitalize on that first five years. And I know for a fact that my parenting went in a different direction because I was able to get different resources that I flat out didn't have, and made the decision, you know, I could raise my kids how I grew up, which is fine, or I could raise them another way. And I know that they were able to have different coping mechanisms and everything as far as just dealing with society and, you know, learning different, you know, different types of information. And it was because you guys were coming to my house, and you guys were giving me that information, and pointing out different things to really focus on, to make sure they were advancing at the rate that they should be. And I truly appreciate the program, everything that you guys did. Thank you.
Well, thank you for everything you do. That's quite the mission.
Thank you.
All right, the next item on the agenda, Mr. Rooney can join us, is the bond issued purchases and related contracts between $7,500 and $150,000. Just as a reminder to everybody, on board action items, we kind of somewhat arbitrarily divide the bond issues into those $150,000 and smaller, and those that are $150,000 and larger. So I guess the line is $150,001. But the ones that are under that, we'll take in as a group. Anything bigger than $150,000, we'll address one at a time and go through. I think there is only one tonight. But that line between the two is somewhat arbitrary. It just felt like a good line to draw to add a little more detail on the bigger items. So we're going to start with the smaller items. I need a motion to approve the bond issued purchases and related contracts, $7,500 to $150,000, as submitted.
Send it. Send it.
And a motion in a second, and Mr. Fran, Mr. Rooney?
I believe we have four items that are under $150,000 on tonight's agenda. Three of those items are architectural services for larger projects that we have on this bond issue. We've had a firm approved already for the Eureka Lockroom project, and we said we would be coming shortly thereafter with the rest of our firms that we would like approval for for the rest of the projects. Arch Images is the first firm. These are all firms that went through the RFQ process with us, the interview process with building administration from each of the affected buildings. We gathered input from that process, as well as checking references and then making recommendations as a final three, with a final recommendation of Arch Images for the LaSalle project. This is the project that will expand the nurse's office and the office, the main entrance of the office, to open up that space, expand the nurse's office.
We followed all the procedures we're supposed to, I mean, I shouldn't say supposed to, that the auditor and everybody else has asked us to do over the years. Have our work completed?
Yes, in the architect process, architects and engineers have a separate statute, and so they run through a different process, and our policies are in line with that. And what they require you to do is to reach out to those in that profession, ask for qualifications, and then go through and try to identify those that have the best fit. And then from that point, you're supposed to go, the state law requires you to go to the first, your first pick and negotiate. If you can't reach the proper negotiations, then you go on to the second one. So that's what we did for each of these. And as Chris had mentioned, we brought in stakeholders from each of these projects in order to help us make those decisions, who did they feel comfortable with. Because one of the things that we're really emphasizing on these projects is that we want the design to be right the first time, because what, one of the things that came up in the state auditor's report was, were change orders. And we're not going to eliminate change orders. I mean, we'll have some change orders, but we categorize them into owner requested change orders, which are those things where you just kind of change your mind later, maybe you didn't look at the designs properly at the beginning, and you now want to make a change. We want to stay away from those. But there are those that are unforeseen or regulatory, and those things are going to happen. But we want to make sure that we limit those, and so we've asked those people to get in on the front end so that they could kind of get a feel for each of the architects and help us make a recommendation.
I've only seen a couple of change orders, and those because the subsurface on something wasn't like it was supposed to be, and we had to.
Right, 100%, those are unforeseen.
Unforeseen circumstances, not just at the whim of whoever proposed it.
Right.
It looks like it's a standard, a 6% fee for architectural services is, there's not a lot of negotiation, that's usually the fee, isn't it?
Yeah, and the other thing I might mention is, in the past, we've used a construction management process, and we paid a construction manager to help manage the projects, and then we also paid the architect fee. One of the things that we're asking, we're doing this time is our facilities department is managing these projects with the help of the architects. So even though we're staying at the lower end of the scale in terms of the 6%, we're also asking them to also give us a stronger role in managing the projects to make sure that everything's being done appropriately during the process. So we're essentially eliminating the fee that we had for construction management, and the facilities department has taken that up along with the help from the architects.
The first one you had was for the nurse's station in LaSalle.
Correct.
This is for the cafeteria renovation at CCL, Stanton, Utah.
Stanton, Utah.
What were the rest of them? The next two of them? I forgot.
Then there was the Kellison project, space and form architects. We're rescanning the building down at Kellison, the middle portion of that building. We have prebed water infiltration problems.
Three different architectural firms?
Excuse me?
Three different architectural firms?
Correct, and that was kind of our goal as we went into this process, is we really, we interviewed a wide variety of firms with the intent of spreading out these projects, not frontloading one firm with all of the projects. And we really worked at finding a good fit for each project.
Tim mentioned, I just want to comment, Tim mentioned the stakeholder process, too. I'm a big fan of how we do that. We really let that committee process vet the architectural firms that come in, and I think they've really driven the direction we've gone, is zeroing down to those, to who they feel are the top three, and that's kind of where we start doing our selection from there. So it's just, it's a really solid process, allows us to consider the details of each separate project and what we need for those various projects, and get the appropriate architects in for doing it.
The one thing you'll also notice is, we've went ahead and added an estimated reimbursable cost to these agreements. The one thing we didn't want to have to do is agree to a 6% fee and then come back when we get reimbursable bills and ask you guys to approve more authority. So we've put in a baseline of 1% on the construction costs for reimbursables. We feel that's very conservative. A lot of this, you know, that 1%, we feel will be rolled back into the budget. We just wanted to make sure we had it included in the original agenda item, so we didn't have to come back for further authority.
And the reimbursables, an example, that'd be permits, so you have the architect that will be pulling permits for you. We're required to pull that, that's not out of their contract, but if this reimbursables budget will allow them to go ahead and pay for the permit while they're down at the city or the county, then we will reimburse that out of this reimbursables account.
So that $14,000 may or may not be used, is that right?
Correct, it will not exceed the $14,000. We actually expect to roll money back into the budget. We just, with the 1%, we wanted to make sure we were covered and did not.
That's that 1% above the 6%, right?
Correct.
But the 1% is an additional compensation to them, it's just when they're paying bills on our behalf.
Yeah, okay. So that was the third one, you got one more down there?
Yeah, there's one more. The fourth item under $150,000 is actually just a purchase. It is a purchase for security camera equipment. We know we've made a significant investment in our stadium facilities this summer. Not all of them had great security camera coverage. This is a purchase of the equipment to install pretty high-tech security systems as far as video surveillance at all four high schools.
We've done a lot of work with Tech Electronics over the years, haven't we? They've installed a lot of stuff.
Yeah, we actually, with the cameras, we do most of the installation ourselves. Tech Electronics provides the equipment on the camera side, and actually, the Aphones, we're putting all those in ourselves. Tech Electronics, where they really provide labors for our firearm systems.
Any questions on those projects? All right, then the motion was to approve the bond issued and related contracts for those four items. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Hearing none, that passes. All right, the next item is one item that is over $150,000. I guess we need a motion to approve the bond issued purchases and related contracts over $150,000 from Dickinson Hussman Architects for STEM lab renovation project at, oh, it just says fiscal year '15, so. Do I have that motion?
Send it.
And the second, so.
This, again, is the last architectural firm that we intend on using for design for the projects on this bond issue. This is a significant agenda item because it is the most significant package on our bond issue. This is the STEM lab upgrades of the four high schools with an estimated construction cost of $10 million. And so we had decided to go with Dickinson Hussman on that project and the agenda item of the four years, the approval for their design fee.
This process would be a little bit more complicated because we will have, I mean, in a number of ways. But we also have four schools that are sharing that $10 million. And one of the things that Dr. Cano said from day one is, what we're going to try to do with that $10 million is try to get all the schools up to the same level. So it won't just be splitting it down in four ways and doing as much construction in each of the schools. We're going to have to evaluate the needs at all four schools, then try to put a price tag on what that's going to cost and how we're going to allocate those resources. And then what we intend to do is to try to do to next summer and to the following. But they'll have to do some significant design work upfront in order to look at all four schools, so we have an idea of how to allocate that $10 million to those four projects.
As I recall, this was the effort to bring these facilities up to match the curriculum where you have the integrated lab and lecture in the same space, so that it brings the facility in with the curriculum, so it was a nice process.
Same, but separate.
But if that's $10 million and $780,000, that's 7.8%, isn't it? Didn't you say $10 million?
No, this is a $10 million, it's going to be anywhere from $10 to $13 million project. And one of the reasons why is that when we sold the bonds, they sold it at a $3 million premium. And so this is one of the projects where it actually started off where we had some reviews by our insurance company that said that we needed to upgrade some certain parts of our lab, and we put about a $400,000 price tag on it. And then that was also going to change the footprint of each one of those science labs, so we asked the curriculum department to get involved in it. And when they did, they did a pretty expansive study and went out to all these different schools in the area and said, you know, really, we need much more than just a safety upgrade in those facilities. So they came back, and as it got close to the end of the bond project, we said, well, we know that it's going to cost at least in the $10 million range, so that's the number that we have in the bond issue. But because we sold the bonds at a premium, we thought this is probably, because of the complexity of the project and some of the preliminary work that's being done about things that we could do in those science areas, then we are anticipating that we may use a substantial part of the premium on the sale of the bonds for this particular project. So the fee that we're going to pay is going to be actually based on what projects we actually do. So if we do just do it at the $10 million, they'll only get paid based upon the $10 million. If we go up to the $13 million, then they'll go up to that. Unlike some of these other contracts where we, those, we had some preliminary estimates on what those would cost, and the agreement that we have with the architects is that that's the fee that you'll get is based upon that estimated cost. So if there are some unusual things that happen and the price raises, their price will be fixed.
If we do a change order and it stays $100,000, do they get 6% of that?
On the ones that we went over before, no. On this one, it can slide anywhere from that $10 million to $13 million, but nothing over that $13 million.
But if you start working, okay, that $13 million covers up to $910,000, so they would get paid on a change order if you added the cost.
Typically, you do. And we have for years here and prior districts, that's kind of the way it goes. We were trying to be real prudential on these other contracts, and we just said, you know, this is what we anticipate the cost of this is going to be. We want you to agree that you will do this design based upon that, and if we do end up having change orders, we don't want the price of the architectural prices going up. This one was a little bit unusual because we didn't have detailed designs before the bond issue went out. It's going to take us a long time to try to get, in fact, I think next week, they're meeting with all the science teachers, and they're going to meet with them by discipline and then by school, and we're going to be pulling all that information, and based upon what we find there, we may want to slide that anywhere between the $10 and the $13 million. So in this particular case, we said that as that project grows from $10 to $13 million, you will get a percentage of that, because there will be four schools that will be spread out, and the complexity of the project will increase, but those others, no.
Good, thank you.
Any other questions, discussion? All right, then the motion was to approve the bond purchases over $150,000. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Just be sure that passes. Thank you, guys. All right, we have one more item, I believe, is the proposed agenda for the September 3rd board meeting, so if we could pull that up. Kind of run down what those items are. Doesn't seem to be a whole lot on there yet, so I guess we'll be flushing that out here in the next couple of weeks.
Yes.
And this is the, we have one more board meeting before the Eureka Days Parade, so we'll go into that in more detail next time. Any other comments on the agenda? Any questions on that?
We picked a date for the retreat, didn't we?
Yes, October 8th.
October 8th.
It's Thursday.
And this agenda item does not require a motion, right? So if there's any other questions, if you have anything that you want to get added to that, I think we're going to have a pin submitted for the next board meeting, I hope we get that done in time, but it'd be good to get that on there. All right, moving on to number nine, the future agenda presentation and events to attend. There are a lot of, Eureka Days is one of them, it's coming up the weekend after Labor Day, but there's a lot of those kinds of things that are going on. And again, just in public awareness, if you have a chance to participate in one, they're enjoyable events, and it's a good way to be out in front, say that the school district's involved, so please try to do that.
Do we, do we have, like, an updated pass, like, if we wanted to go to the events within schools, like, last year, or any of the athletic events or what have you? Do we have that passed here?
That's all it is?
Oh, okay.
Good, great. All right, are there any other agenda items anybody would like to bring up tonight?
We, when we go to retreat, we'll figure out some certain things in regards to what information you need as a board member, but also, we talk about groups coming in and presenting, such as what the presenting, such as what they did tonight, the Parents as Teachers. We want to get out of the list, work on the list of certain groups to come in and do that. Be thinking about some groups you want to present. I love the presentation night and every meeting. We have a five or 10-minute presentation. I think it'd be great, just me personally.
There's a certain schedule, some of them that come up on a regular basis, like the community ed, we get at least once a year, and there's some others as well. But if there's anything specific that you want to know, is it on the calendar already? Gretchen would be the right person to ask about that. And if they're not on the calendar, we can always invite someone to come in and make a presentation.
Some of them every other year. Just depends.
So, some are on the calendar. We just need to figure out which ones aren't.
Okay. So, if you have one in mind, let's ask, see if it is, and if it's not, we can probably get it.
It was great since last year.
Yeah. The board retreat coming up in October is a, is a little bit later than usual. The idea is to set the norms for the board and how we're going to handle certain issues, and when something comes up, what's the procedure for it, in addition to just kind of scheduling throughout the year, things like that. So, it's good that is open to the public. Generally, it's not very exciting unless you're on the board, but people are certainly welcome to come and listen to it if they are. All right. Hearing no other items, we will adjourn the meeting for tonight, and thank you, everybody, for coming.